Good morning. It is Tuesday, July 22, 2025, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no changes, I take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you're in the public meeting room, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close public comment number one. We'll move on to agency reports, and we have Campfire's annual report, and Owen Ballard's on Zoom.
Good morning. Can you guys-
Good morning.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good morning. My name is Owen Ballard. I'm the new executive director of Campfire, Heart of Iowa. For anybody who doesn't know, we operate several youth development programs throughout central Iowa. Our Story County location is called Camp Canwita. It's on North Duff, just past Innes Grove Park. We've been there, I think, probably nearing 100 years. And at that location, we offer several programs. We have our summer day camp programs that are currently operating. We have one that is for youth entering K through 5th grade. We have another that is for specifically middle school youth. That kind of scales up and provides age-appropriate programming and challenges for those youth. All of our programs are really outdoor-based, and also include kind of our hidden curriculum that provides literacy and STEM education, kind of reinforcing those academic schools that they're learning during the school year to prevent the summer slide, but also includes a lot of social-emotional learning, things like helping kids develop friendships, develop good friendship skills, communication skills, problem-solving, and self-confidence, and all of those other things that are a little more squishy, but just as important to being successful in life and in their careers in the future and in school right now. Some new things this year. We continue to see pretty steady enrollment in our summer and school year programs with a small amount of growth, but that's, you know, all things considered, I think, a real positive, given that, you know, many families are continuing to see challenges to affording and participating in programs like ours. The charitable giving grants from the county and from other sources, corporate partners, United Way, things like that, all go to support our scholarship programs and our financial assistance, and to just keep programs affordable for everybody. So no family is paying the true cost of what it would cost otherwise to participate in our programs. New in this past year is, you know, we have been a part of the Story County community for a long, long time. I have felt that we are capable of doing more and providing more services. And so in this past year, what kind of came out of that is we have this space. We have all of these people who are youth professionals. Let's look at what we can do during the school year to provide more opportunities for youth. And what kind of came out of that is we now are offering an after-school program, Monday through Friday, all school year long at Camp Canwita. So we pick up from all of the Ames Elementary Schools daily and transport to Camp Canwita. And this past school year, the 24-25 school year, we ran our new after-school program, the full year long. Later this week, actually, on Thursday, we'll be having a visit from HHS, which will be kind of our first step to achieving licensure for that program. And once it is licensed with HHS, we'll be able to make it even more accessible by accepting childcare assistance funds for families that qualify for that. So we're really excited for that change, which we hope and believe will be implemented before this coming school year begins. So that'll be an option available to families this coming August and September. And then we're also continuing to grow our School Day Off program. So we do operate year-round, and so anytime a school district is out of school, we offer a single-day day camp program that we call School Day Off Camp. New this year, instead of just going by the Ames calendar, we're also adding in the Ballard District, which I think falls in Story County, and then also the Gilbert School District. So each of those districts have some days that are a little bit unique to them and don't quite align with the Ames Community School District. So we're adding additional opportunities specific to those dates so that they have something to do when school is out. I think that's my quick briefing. Is there anything I didn't include that I should have, or any questions I can answer?
Thanks, Owen. Any questions?
No.
I just want to make a comment. Both my kids, Owen went to Camp Canwita. My daughter has several that she met back in like 4th or 5th grade, have become lifelong friends, and she's been in both their weddings, which has been great. And my son, who has an intellectual disability, went through camp, and he wasn't ready to go to the older age, but I worked with Campfire to make him a junior counselor to help him get some leadership skills under the previous location director. If he could at 31 come back to Camp Canwita, he would. He absolutely has such wonderful memories of the program, so I know how great it is to have that asset in our community, and thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thank you for those nice words. It's good to hear. Yeah, camp's a special place for kids. It's one of the few places that remains that is made for and exists only for kids, right? There's not a lot of places like that anymore outside of school. And so we're blessed to have such a great location in Ames, right in the heart of Ames, where we can still get kids outside and help them experience nature, and fortunate that that continues to be something that parents and families and the community at large are valuing.
And even on hot days with all the trees that you have around there, you can still be outside because it's pretty darn shady.
Yep, and we're continuing to make facilities improvement. You know, one of the challenges with our school year program is the cabins on-site were really built to be seasonal. They weren't meant to be operated year-round. And so that's something that we're slowly but surely kind of, you know, when they were first built, they didn't even have bathrooms in them. And so, you know, since that time, a lot has changed. And so, you know, we're putting AC in, we're putting heating in, new flooring, things like that, as much as we can with the money we have, but trying to update those facilities so that they can be used more efficiently throughout the year so that they can accommodate more kids throughout the year, because especially with licensure, our capacity for that after-school program is based on our indoor program space. But during the summer, you know, it's a very outdoor-based program. So we're sort of limited by our square footage a little bit when it comes to that formal licensure, but just another thing that we're working on little by little.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we've got consideration of the July 15 minutes.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from consent?
No, okay. I would move approval of consent as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Okay, now we're down to public hearing items. We have second consideration of ordinance 327, amending Chapter 80, Flood Plane Management Program of Story County Code of Ordinances. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. As stated last week, and in the information prepared for the board's agenda, this is a reorganization of our chapter, Chapter 80 Flood Plane Management Program. To me, that is prescribed by the Iowa DNR. Last week, I did note a couple modifications that we needed to complete. Those were done and uploaded with a revised ordinance to the agenda. Staff has not received any public comment since last meeting or even any public comment period. And with that, we would recommend approval today and waiving the second, or pardon me, the third consideration. Following that, we will send it to the DNR for their review and action. If they do have any changes, then we'll have to come back with another ordinance, but that's just the way the process is defined with the DNR. Are there questions for me?
No? This is a public hearing item, so I will open the public hearing. If anyone in the public meeting room would like to make comment, I ask that you please go to the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. The public hearing is open. And I'm not seeing any. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, motions?
I have done. I would approve the Code of Ordinance text amendment, ordinance 327, as put forth in case TA 2504, I think, on second consideration and waiving third consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on. We've got discussion and consideration of contractor work for items in the assessor's office. Morning, Joe B.
Good morning, board. Yes, we are looking at, as my memo states, looking at adding a secondary exit out of the assessor's office and kind of securing up a couple of the big windows that face the hallway. They're almost glass floor to ceiling. During the elections, we were having people lean on them as they were waiting in line to vote. So this will kind of secure them up so you don't have to worry about it breaking. And it's kind of disturbing for the, because those windows happen to be right inside people's cubicles on the inside of the office. And then, you know, with some of our safety training we've had this year, some things have come up with having a secondary means of exit that doesn't put you right in the hallway of potential danger. So we was able to look at adding an exit that is adjacent to the stair tower door at the west end of that hallway. It kind of has a 45-degree angle where it widens at the, right in front of the stair tower door. We can squeeze a full 36-inch door in there and have it open to where you could get right into the stair tower without really being seen from the main hallway. So, and it was on our plan to do in this fiscal year, is one of our staff's projects, but we are currently down three maintenance texts, so we're kind of shuffling things to contractors. This is one that I don't want to put off any longer, so I'd like to see it get done, and then we can focus on other things. Like the memo says, I'm not anticipating it affecting my operating budget, but since it's over 5,000, it wasn't directly called out in my budget. I'm just up here to get permission to move forward with it. I'll take questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions, but just thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. We've had a couple other projects of similar nature that we've, that have come out, some of the things looking at. So it'll be nice for them.
Great. I don't have any questions.
I would move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye.
Thank you.
Was it your birthday? Happy birthday. Sorry, I missed it. Right. Next, we have consideration of three-month subscription for Citizen Serve. I know on the budget here, it says for $11,025, but I believe, Leanne, you have also presented us with another quote that's six months in length versus what's proposed in here is three months.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And my apologies. And after the agenda was published, I had a chance to talk with Alyssa Wiggle, and she suggested we look at a six-month extension of Citizen Serve rather than just a three-month. So I did get that, and I just got that invoice last night from Online Solutions. So Citizen Serve is our online application portal, as you know, and thank you. We are transitioning to GeoPermits. Unfortunately, because of staff changes and other delays, we are not behind in planning and zoning, or planning and development on the application end of things, but we are in the legacy permits and the transference of all the data that's in Citizen Serve into GeoPermits. Beyond just Citizen Serve, we have also a variety of other areas where historical and legacy data and information is stored. Our G Drive, Tyler, you name it, is all out there. And we did not have a concise effort to put everything in Citizen Serve for years. We need to play catch-up essentially, so we can put all that at one time into GeoPermits. That's why I'm before you, because we cannot get that done by September. Maybe we could. I don't want to put that type of pressure on us. So initially, we thought three months. I agree with Alyssa, extending that out to six months. That allows our IT director to get on board, too. During the process, we need them as an integral part of this process. What I do also propose is that we go from 14 users down to 12. There are a couple users that we are just not using Citizen Serve. We don't get a price break when we go lower than 12 at all, so it's, we'll just go with 12. It is not budgeted. We did not anticipate it. So I'm here asking you, please, to allow us to do that so that we can have that breathing room, too, as necessary. Are there questions for me?
If you would do three months and then another three months, for example, if you weren't done, it would be another $11,000 or so. So that's why you were looking at the six month.
And I do think three months, it gets us to December, is doable, but we also are expecting staff changes in our office for a period of time for a while, and then they'll resume to normal staffing, too. But I'm just, the unknowns are what maybe are causing me a little bit of concern. And so six months, I think, is a good suggestion.
And your plan is to load all of the other legacy information into Citizen Serve, and then just do one transfer into-
Things that might, and talking to GeoPermits, they can do whatever we want. I think that is the easiest way to manage it from a staff perspective on our end, to pull it on to Citizen Serve and then pull it from there, because we do have things in several different locations. And going forth, for, I can't talk today. Once we go onto GeoPermits, we'll have standard operating procedures that everything is loaded there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I would move that we approve the six-month subscription for 12 users for Citizen Serve, not to exceed $16,200.
There's a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thanks, Leanne. Hey, next we have departmental reports. We've got Animal Control with Caitlin. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Right. Has been a busy quarter at Animal Control. In the last quarter, we've taken in 83 cats and 32 dogs for a grand total of 115 intakes. Luckily for us, our adoption numbers have spiked somewhat this last quarter with 62 total adoptions and 19 animals returned to their owners. Our current animal population as of July 15 is eight dogs and 64 cats. Throughout the last quarter, we received nearly $5,000 in total donations. Typically, our adoption numbers are slower this time of year, but we have been able to have pretty strong adoptions with 29 in the last week of June, first part of July. Animal Control has also been quite busy with 37 total calls, majority of which being bite reports and confined stray animals. However, our lower stray intake on that end has led us to focus on transferring animals from our waitlists and rescue partners. We took part in several community efforts. We did our first-ever kitten shower, which was hugely popular. It'll probably be the first of many. We also did a Get Outdoors Day with Story County Conservation. We were able to take some puppies, too. That was quite successful. And then we had our annual Chasing Tales fundraiser crew. They were able to donate, or to fundraise $5,850 for the animal shelter, and we received a very generous donation of $4,000, and that was enough to purchase corona beds for every single animal in the shelter.
Nice. Great. Do you have any questions for me?
What is a kitten shower?
That's what's going to be my question.
So we had an event where we had kittens that were out, and the general public could come out. They were able to view and ask questions about fostering. They had some games. We had refreshments. I think we had lemonade and cookies and muffins. And there was a lot of people that came out. We were, I think they had a raffle. Yeah, it was a good time.
That was at the shelter?
Yes, it was at the shelter. It was very, very successful. We were very surprised at how many people showed up.
That's great.
Thanks for the explanation, because I was thinking literally of a kitten that's being showered. I'm like, okay, well, I don't want to do that. Well, no, yeah, like, oh, how does this work?
It was a way for us to get our foster program out there and then see how people can get involved, especially when kitten season can be a very busy time, so.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you.
All right. Other reports? Fiscal year '25 quarterly report. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Finishing up FY '25, going to come next week and ask for an amendment for '26. The quarterly report was put in your packet. As you can see, we had 85% of the expenditures for the year were spent, so that was, that left a significant balance. For the general fund, we had 45% ending fund balance, which with the amendment, I've got that down to 28, because a lot of those dollars are getting amended into this year. So as you can see, the ARPA fund is down to 3.2 million, which we've budgeted to spend this fiscal year, so I'm assuming it'll happen this fiscal year. The supplemental fund came in at 38%, which was, I was happy about that because we have a lot of things that come due right at the first of the fiscal year. The rural fund came in at 27%. I'm amending some, or lost funds back in right away because there was 400 and some thousand that didn't get spent. It's going to get spent right away now, so. And the other one is the, oh, I didn't put the amount for the opioid fund. Fail. I'll have to remember to do that next time, huh? 900,000 approximately in that fund. Secondary Roads Fund came in at 98% ending fund balance.
Did they get some additional funds?
They got about 400,000 additional state funds.
I remember Darren mentioning that.
They also were, their expenditures were down 1.8 million. So those two combined left a substantial ending fund balance.
Will that go towards then the new shop?
Yeah, he's having me amend in 300,000 for the new shop that was over the 1 million that he put in there. And a little, I think 800,000 worth of construction funds that are still, or that are carrying. So still over 50%, I think, when we, after we amend.
Okay.
For revenues, we came in at 101.24%, so we actually brought in more revenue than we anticipated also. So, yeah, as you can see, the engineer debt there was up 540,000 in revenues. Higher than expected. A note on IT. IT doesn't typically have revenues. There's been confusion on the Tyler billing, apparently. So we had paid 53,000 to Tyler for four years' worth of unbilled services. In May, they sent 53,000 back to us. I put it in miscellaneous, because we paid it at the end of the previous fiscal year. And last week, two weeks ago, they're like, oh, you owe us that 53 plus another 19,000. And we're like, get your billing together.
Yeah.
I have Alyssa and Tim trying to figure out, and Stacy trying to figure out what exactly, it's for Eagle. So I'm trying, they're trying to figure out exactly what happened and why. But if that 53,000, or if the new check comes back, I'm going to just say, no, keep it. Because we haven't paid, I mean, we had not paid for it. It was legit.
But they, but you paid for it, but they sent it back, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
No explanation on when they returned it?
They don't, no, none. It's already been paid. Well, no, it hasn't, but okay. We think there was a miscommunication in accounting departments at Tyler because the lady that had been dealing with Stacy went on maternity leave, and then they got the check, and they didn't know what to do with it, so they sent it back. We think, but we're not sure.
Probably never know. Okay. Thank you. All right.
So we ended the year. I did update your budget books this week.
I did see that.
Lisa was, Lisa was in the office when I did it, so she knew I did it. I did update your budget books. Couple things that I'll just lightly cover is for fiscal year '25, property taxes were right at 60% of our revenue. The next one was intergovernmental, about 20%. So those were the two major revenue sources for us. And our total operating slash wages and fringe, operating was 52% of our budget, and wages and fringe were 48% of our budget. So, and that's about normal for us. But yeah, that's all in your book, along with all the fund balance updates and all that kind of stuff, so. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Don't be afraid to ask if you have any questions about any of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Thank you. All right. Any upcoming agenda items?
No.
Nope. Okay. Now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public, items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If someone's in the public meeting room and would like to make public comment, please go to the podium, or if you're online, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close public comment. We'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting date, updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin?
Okay. Meeting this afternoon on extreme temperature sheltering, a work group we have going. Tomorrow, Learning Farms webinar. Thursday, the Story County Economic Development Group at 10, is that correct?
And where is that at? Maxwell?
Okay, Maxwell. Okay, I didn't have that.
I didn't either.
Okay. And Friday, a Lions Board meeting in the morning. And we have a Romero House, open house in the afternoon. And next Monday, I don't seem to have anything. So kind of a slower week.
I have a Boost ECI meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow, I've got a Center for Creative Justice Board meeting. Thursday, Story County Economic Development Group Wellness Committee in the afternoon, and then Community and Family Resources Board meeting Thursday night. Friday, I have Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. And then in the afternoon, the Romero House Open House. There is the Nesco Family Medical Center remodel open house and zering on Saturday, and I'm going to try to make it to. And that is, I don't have any, I don't have anything yet on Monday, so also kind of slow for me.
I don't have anything this afternoon. I have a-
I don't have anything this afternoon. I have, I need to look at the week, sorry. I have a meeting tomorrow morning down in Des Moines. Then I have a Workforce Finance Committee meeting Thursday. I have a HERDA Board meeting, and then the Story County Economic Development Group meeting. I may be a few minutes late as I finish up my HERDA meeting to get down to Maxwell. Then I have a CICS meeting and Behavioral Health Town Hall on Thursday. So Thursday's my busy day. Friday, I will be out of the office. And Monday, so far, I don't have meetings on Monday, but today's Tuesday, that will change. That will change.
Long time.
I won't be able to make it to the Nesco Medical Center on Saturday, but Mayor Hurry would like to schedule a time to come up and and see it and stuff, because I'm just not able to this particular weekend.
All right, sounds great. And if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Headen's aye. We are adjourned.